Good evening. This is the Guilford Board of Education. We are holding a special meeting tonight, Tuesday, January 31st, in order to allow the Board of Education to hold a discussion about the proposed 2023-2024 educational budget that our superintendent, Dr. Freeman, has delivered to us. We held two public forums last Monday and Tuesday, which gave the Guilford community the opportunity to come and speak to us about their wishes for the budget, comment on what they saw, ask questions if need be. We have also been available by email and have received at least a couple of emails from members of the public and will continue to receive communications in that fashion if people are interested. We do, in our timeline, have a meeting scheduled for next Monday, February 6th, at which we will be voting on a final budget to then put forth to the Board of Finance. And so tonight's meeting is really the first opportunity for us as a group, as a board, to discuss the budget in front of us. So with that said, let me just set, I think, a little bit of the stage. The Board of Education receives the budget. We've all had an opportunity to go through the budget line by line. We have put forth a number of questions to the administration and particularly to Mrs. Linda Trudeau, who has wonderfully responded to each of our questions as we have tried to clarify certain line items and understand others. And so we have that information in front of us to discuss. I really want to open it up to my colleagues. And we really can start anywhere. We can start with comments. We can start with questions. We can start with thoughts on what we've heard from the public or what we would like to consider as we peruse this document. Is there anybody who would like to go first?
I'll start.
All righty. Thanks, Sean.
No, no problem. So Linda, first and foremost, thank you for answering a lot of these questions. And I'm glad that these will be posted because, you know, as we've gone through all 101 pages of this budget, right, where there's not a lot that we could really, we have all that much flexibility with. And so when we look at these line items, at least I look at it from, you know, the perspective of, you know, what's changing, you know, year over year, right? So some of the things that I look at are kind of expenses that we see that may have been, you know, bumped up in previous years but still continue to be at higher levels. You know, I think some of the things that we looked at were, sorry, I looked at, were, you know, something like custodial supplies. And I think that's a question that Linda answered, but kind of just looking to learn a little bit more about it. And again, we're not talking about huge dollars here. You know, and that's the tricky part about this budget is like, we're looking at these individual line items that are only like hundreds, if not thousands of dollars that really don't add up.
Really quickly, yes.
And so I guess the question is, is like, are we, when we're looking at supplies, materials, are we at pre-COVID levels? Or are we more at a new baseline high in terms of where levels are, you know, specific to cleaning, custodial, maintenance for the buildings in terms of those supplies? And again, I know I'm nitpicking, or at least it seems like I'm nitpicking, but there's not a lot we could do other than nitpick.
No, and they're all important questions. I would probably need to defer to Linda and Cliff, but I think that we're at a new baseline high. I think that the pandemic raised concerns for us. I think we've certainly scaled back from when we were at hourly wiping doorknobs down in the buildings. But I think that it has raised concerns about maintenance and cleanliness. And I don't think that we have returned to pre-COVID levels. And again, as with everything in this budget, not only have we, and it happens every year with educational budgets, expectations increase every year. They don't go backwards. You never see decreasing expectations in a public school. And so when you look at increased academic performance or increased needs around social emotional needs, or we're going to make this place cleaner and more sanitary than it was before, you never then say, well, we're done with that. We're actually going to go back to the previous level. So on top of that sort of increased expectation, just like everything else in this budget, it's also been impacted by inflation and by the increasing cost of doing business. So supply chain problems, inflation, everything is just more expensive. Without Mr. Gurnum here, Linda, I don't think I could add any more to that unless you, unless there's something you wanted to add.
That's pretty much it.
Okay, makes sense. You know, again, going through this, Linda's answered a lot of these questions. I do think for, you know, public visibility, some of it is, you know, it is worth, you know, bringing in a public forum. One of the larger increases is around computer software. Could we expand upon that just in terms of just what those dollars are going towards and, you know, just why we're seeing the increase?
I absolutely will turn that over to Linda and Kevin. But baseline is that we brought in softwares during the pandemic with Esser monies. And again, now that we've become accustomed to some of those things, we're not going to drop those tools that we've learned how to use. And so some of it is picking up expenses, contracts that were covered under Esser dollars that are now going away. Existing contracts have increased. But there's also a significant addition of an HR package that is a plug into the Esser system. So part of it, a significant portion of that is increasing our efficiency in the way that we do business as the largest employer in the town of Guilford. But Kevin, Linda, anything on that one? That I've glossed over too quickly?
No, the only other little piece is some added programs for our Munis software. So there's different modules. And as we expand the use of it, we've purchased one or two new ones.
And for the public, Munis is?
Munis is our financial software. So we added a couple pieces so that we can expand the use of it. That was an added cost to the budget as well.
And as we've turned over a number of positions in the business office, that's both an opportunity but also a necessity to upgrade the way that we were, the new hires that we brought in expected us to have this infrastructure in place. By providing it to them, we're again becoming a more efficient operation.
I'll keep going unless anybody, okay. Textbooks.
Yes.
We see significant spending in textbooks. Can we, you know, specifically at Adams and Elementary? What, are we looking at revamping current textbooks? You know, are we replacing old textbooks? Are we adding in, you know, new areas where we haven't had textbooks in the past? I think, you know, I've got two kids in school, right, at Adams, right? And I, you know, my question to them at dinner was, what are you using for textbooks? And it's kind of like, you know, they had to think about exactly where they're actually using textbooks. So, you know, the question pertains to just exactly, are we replacing old ones? Are we bringing in, you know, new ones that we haven't had textbooks in the past? Or are they digital textbooks?
Quick answer is yes. All of those things continue to happen. It's a little unfair, but I'll invite Dr. Goss to join on this one as well. But part of that is that, yes, we still use paper books. And so there's always going to be an annual need to replace or rebind or repair or refurbish some of those texts. So there is regular wear and tear that occurs. We are adding new texts. Specifically at the elementary level, we're adding new texts around the science of reading as we continue to follow changing expectations again, bringing in a more structured phonics base to what we're doing and needing to supply materials at that level. There's been a number of questions over the past years about why we're not going paperless. Aren't textbook producers providing digital texts? They are, but they're doing them as companions to the actual textbooks. What has changed is that your students will less frequently be expected to bring home an 80-pound backpack every day. What we do less often is give every student a phone book-sized textbook for every class and expect them to carry them around. But there are multiple class sets that live in the classrooms. At the elementary level, we have class libraries. And so we're continuing to provide a text-rich environment that is digital. It is virtual, but it is also continues to be that bound book. Emily, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, and as Mrs. Trudeau put in her notes, there is one specific digital license that's renewable. And that renewable usually is a six-year package, which is expensive.
Yeah.
So you'll see that those come and go in different budgets, different years.
I had a question regarding to capital site improvements. And that was an earmark of $50,000 for playground site improvements. I've seen the new playground. It's absolutely beautiful. I guess the question is, is where is this $50,000 going to?
Again, I might need to defer to Mr. Gurnum, but I know at Lakes that the work, while it's impressive, is not completely done. There are some swing bays that will still, they're going to be adjusted or expanded in the coming year. Those aren't completely done. And I don't know, Linda, if you got a response.
It's in your answers here.
Yes.
There you go.
It's in the answers.
Thanks.
Apologies.
No, it's okay.
So there was some additional drainage that had to be added. The cost of materials came in higher. I did check with Mr. Gurnum. This was deferred from this year's budget because of the additional costs that we incurred with some other projects. So we're carrying this over into next year to complete the site work at the playground.
Okay.
So we didn't.
So this is necessary site work, obviously. It's not like it's a wishful spending. It's definitely necessary site work.
It's necessary site work.
I want to take a pause there.
Yeah, no, no, it's great. I do want to, and I should have done this as we started, just for the viewing public and those who are unable to be present or see Dr. Freeman's presentation of the budget to us, which is on the Guilford Public Schools website. But he provides a slide identifying cost drivers. And I just want to note that the cost drivers, salary increases, the medical increase, medical insurance increase. And a reminder to our public that between salaries and benefits, 80% of our budget is covered by both of those. Transportation, which as Dr. Freeman just noted, this district, like all of us, is experiencing inflation, increased costs, supply chain, et cetera. So we're seeing things like a significant increase in fuel costs, transportation. There's also some cost drivers with heat, software and tuition. But I just want to identify that when those increases, those cost drivers are summed, they represent 3.99%, right? So we have been provided a draft budget that starts at a 4.78% increase. But four fifths of that are cost drivers related to salaries, benefits, utilities, things we need and use, right? Tuition. So what you're finding, as I think, as we hold these types of discussions is that, first of all, we're asking questions that relate to things we haven't necessarily had to ask about before because of the kinds of increases we're seeing this year in things like heat, right? And also, we, in past years, we have been considering new positions. We've been considering new initiatives. And that's not what we're looking at this year. What's been brought to us is a budget that really supports and maintains the high quality of education in Guilford. But we're not determining, like, should we consider this new position? We're really just looking at this budget and noticing how little room there is to move, quite frankly.
There are no six-figure additions like an international baccalaureate program or a full-day kindergarten or expanding to another in-house special education program that didn't previously exist. None of those large-scale initiatives are in this budget. It may be the closest we've offered in 12 years together to a maintenance budget.
And so I'm just noting that, I know for me, the discussion feels a little different because of that. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that we're really a little bit at the margins here in looking at this. Other thoughts from my colleagues, questions, discussion points?
Yeah, I thought it'd be nice, Dr. Freeman, if you could speak to the recommendation of the budget for a Japanese teacher in the high school, just to talk about, because for some, that might sound out of nowhere, but I'm sure it's not. And so it'd be nice if you could just explain the thought behind that.
I'm particularly, I appreciate the question. And I'm particularly proud of this one component in the budget. It does represent an exciting opportunity in this year's budget. And it is, again, an example of how in Guilford we attempt to take a challenge or a problem and turn it into an opportunity. We are facing a teacher shortage in the state of Connecticut. One of the most difficult areas to fill is in the area of world language. We have been challenged this year at both the elementary and high school level in keeping world languages position staffed. Particularly in the high school, we have been carrying a part-time position for a French teacher. It is a French position that is not, it's a 40% position, not a full-time position. We have been particularly challenged in keeping somebody in that position when there's a teacher shortage. And when other districts are offering full-time positions, we've struggled to keep that position filled. At the same time, we're actually seeing enrollment in French declining rather than increasing. So the opportunity to expand that to a full-time position, to insulate and protect staffing position, isn't justified by the enrollment and the desire to continue to enroll in French. The high school staff looked at that and came forward with a really exciting opportunity in reducing the French position, but bringing in instead a Japanese position. And when the student body was polled, there appears to be a significant interest in coming to the high school, beginning a new language. We don't offer Japanese at the elementary or middle levels, just as at high school, for the first time, we begin to offer Arabic. And now we will be able to offer an Asian language as well. So we're expanding and diversifying the offerings and addressing a difficulty that we've run into in staffing at the same time. So we will be reducing our French staffing by .4. We'll be bringing on a full-time Japanese position. And the high school administration are confident that there will be enthusiasm to enroll in those classes.
So my next question is, will we have difficulty finding a Japanese teacher?
Possibly. But we know that we're running into problems staffing. So it's an exciting opportunity. And there are more younger teachers who are coming out with certifications in Mandarin and Japanese and Hindi. And so we're seeing more of those opportunities while we're beginning to see fewer teachers who are securing the French certification.
So can I ask you the question? Because I know there was a lot of parents interested in Mandarin a few years ago, and there was some interest in that. What was the decision? How was the decision weighed to choose Japanese versus Mandarin versus something else?
Two. One is aspirational, and again, one was an attempt to be strategic. Mandarin teachers are in high demand, and districts are finding themselves in bidding wars. There are fewer districts that are offering Japanese. We also know that one of our neighbors, Madison, offers Mandarin classes. We are really hopeful that with some changing requirements and opportunities at the state level that we, and I know I've talked about this for years, but we really are hopeful that we might be able to partner with Madison and offer some cross-district virtual opportunities where we may have an opportunity to seat some Madison students into our Arabic or Japanese classes and seat some Guilford students into the Mandarin classes that are offered nearby, if not in Guilford. So that would be leveraging some of those software packages that we're not going to give up, that we discovered during the pandemic, working with some hybrid or fully virtual classes. It's going, the state is looking at what they will allow in those areas currently. So it's, again, an exciting opportunity and looking not to compete with a neighbor, but trying to complement what a neighboring district is offering, hoping that we can then partner as well as complement moving forward.
That would be.
That was a mouthful. Wouldn't that be cool, though?
I mean, we've talked about it before, as you noted.
Yes.
But the idea of not only doing that, but with added language opportunities is really exciting.
So again, I give the high schools, I give the high school language department and administration a lot of credit for bringing forward such a creative and thoughtful suggestion, thoughtful not just about how to fill that hole, but to maybe leverage an opportunity like that one, if not next year and years to come, hopefully.
And we feel confident that those two French teachers can carry the load of kids who are now in class queued up for French.
The point for leaving, are we going to be?
Yes, we believe that we can meet the demand or we can meet the interest in French currently with that reduced staffing. And again, right, it's the same number of students. So as some will move to Japanese, we will be able to meet the interest in Latin, Spanish, French, Arabic, and Japanese now, spreading the interest across a wider variety of languages.
Thank you. On the same topic, will any student in any grade be able to take Japanese? Like, if I've taken three years of Spanish in my senior year, I want to take Japanese one, is that something I can do?
It's a really good question. It's a detail that I would have to reach out to Principal Chaff and get back to you on. I want to be cautious about answering that off the top of my head here tonight. I mean, I say that, and then I'm going to start answering it. The quick answer is a lot of that will have to do with demand. So if it is so new and so exciting that we get an over enrollment, then it is likely that, as with any class, it will be staggered from upperclassmen down. So part of that, we'll have to see what the student returns and course selections are.
So the expectation is that this would really be for incoming freshmen?
Not necessarily, no. Again, if it's really oversubscribed, we might see that we enroll upperclassmen first to give them an opportunity even just for one year before we brought it down. But I would have to talk to, yeah, maybe I'm answering too much already. I'd have to talk with Julie at the high school to have a firmer answer. And we can get that to you in a follow-up written answer.
Can we talk about the elevator over here?
Goes up and down.
Goes up and down. How often would it go up and down? Is it used?
This is the elevator at 595, proposed in the bonding package.
Right, yes, the $500,000 elevator.
So it would not, the building is built into a hill. And so you've got an entrance in the back and you've got an entrance in the front. Most of the first floor is used for student and wellness activities. And then the second floor would be exclusively the offices. One of the biggest pieces is that the front of the building fronts onto student parking. And the back of the building opens up onto staff parking. So our thinking was that we would have all of the staff at 595 parking in the back. And then those staff members would have the opportunity of both stairs and an elevator then to get to their offices. We could, if we moved in with the existing elevator, didn't replace it proactively. If we ended up with one or two staff members who needed first-floor access, we could certainly give them a waiver by having them park in the front. It would impinge somewhat slightly on student parking. We would never need to park all of our staff members in the front. So again, this is, the elevator works. The elevator works today. We could move in and the elevator will work. What we worry about is the elevator is no longer supported, warranted, and parts aren't available. So if we were to move in and the elevator were to stop working, you would then have a more expensive repair when the building's closed up or a decision. We'd have to check with local code if we were required to have an elevator.
That's my question. I'm worried about ADA and, I mean, I don't want to spend, it's a big chunk of money to spend on something that's working.
Linda, I don't know if you know the answer, if it would be required to have the elevator with?
Or what the delta in cost would be between replacing it post-construction.
And crossing our figure, right.
Are we talking double the amount?
What's the impact scale to a closed building, new elevator versus open building, new elevator?
We can work on.
How open is it really? Because we're not really, we're not doing a roof or anything on the building right now. It's all interior work, correct?
Yeah. So again, we could talk to Cliff and try to come back with written responses on both of those before Monday night.
I'd just like to check the need, the actual need. And I don't want to be insensitive to ADA needs, even if we're in compliance without the elevator. There's still a certain amount of sensitivity to that. But I'd rather not spend the money if we don't need to, until we need to.
It would not be high usage. I mean, to be, we know that it would not be high usage. It's just whether or not the, whether we need it by code and, again, the sensitivity around the limited usage. Yep, totally understand why we flagged that and called it out.
Yeah, you're doing the due diligence to, you know, it's obviously cheaper now to do it than it will be eventually.
We would have to keep a park, at least a parking space on the student lot for any guests that are.
Right, yeah, we know that we would be carving, we would be carving visitor spaces and handicap spaces out of that student parking anyway. And so if we did have an employee who regularly needed the same accommodation, we would be pulling it out of those spaces or adding one to the eight or nine that we had already identified. Yes, it wouldn't be a significant impact.
That's what I was thinking, so.
Yep, it's exactly why we flagged it for you in our initial presentation.
So you'll get back to us with whether or not it's required as well?
Yes, right, so we have it now. But the question would be, if it stopped working, would we be required to fix it?
To immediately fix it, right.
Right, like if it's accessible.
Yeah, if it's an ADA issue, it would maybe.
Because it sounds like you wouldn't.
It's two different uses.
Depends, two different uses.
It is two different uses.
Two means of egress from both sides.
Yes.
I doubt an ADA requirement would come into play if you're not functioning as a two-story, like.
And I believe the ground-level entrance at the front, I haven't spent a whole lot of time there, but I believe it's a flush entrance. I don't think there's even a stair at the front entrance. And so we'll look into it for sure. And we will also try to nail down some kind of suggested delta of the difference between doing it now and what would it mean if we had to do it two years from now.
Yeah, and if we were building it ground up and we were doing the exact same purpose for the first floor and the second floor, would we be putting in an elevator?
Right, exactly.
The elevator went in when it was student use on both levels, right? It was, right, there were classrooms on both levels.
Yeah, if we were building it ground up.
You'd have to have it in that case.
It's different now.
I had, Dr. Freeman, I had a question. In your budget presentation, under possible adjustments, you noted under possible reductions, grade-two teacher at LEED. Now, we know over the last year that there were a couple of positions that were added post the budget as we watched enrollment numbers over the summer and wanted to both be responsive to parent concerns and stay within our board policy recommendations. Is this, the notation here suggests that it might be possible to not have that position and stay within the guidelines? I was looking at the enrollment numbers, and it looks like it's, potentially could be cutting it close. But I may be missing something.
It's cutting it very close. And so please, to be really, really clear, my suggested talking points for reductions are not recommendations. I do not think that these are good ideas. But we came forward with a budget that sits at 4.78%. Should we find it necessary to make reductions? There are some places that we could go that I think might cause little pain. And there are some other ones that, this is currently an unbudgeted position. So this position exists today in the current budget. And we are funding that without having built it in as a baseline position. It would fall within board guidelines, I believe, as this position, as this group moves from second grade to third grade. But it's close. But it's close.
It is close. I mean, I must say, I sat with a calculator, I was like going, what am I missing? It's close.
And a few families move over the summer and we could find ourselves out, and then needing to put it back in next year anyway. And when I noted this in my initial presentation, this is the only one we listed, but all of those other unbudgeted or currently existing positions that exist on slide number 13 for investments. There's, the same could be said for the pre-K position at Lakes, the kindergarten position at Jones, or a part-time special ed position at Cox. All of those could be cut. I mean, realistically, they don't exist in the budget today, but I don't think any of those are good ideas. And, and I put them there to, to illustrate that making those decisions literally increases class size. It doesn't possibly, or hypothetically, or maybe someday down the line, it immediately will increase class size in those four specific areas. And so it was there, it needs to be discussed. Should this budget not pass at the Board of Finance or at referendum? And should we receive some arbitrary new bottom line and have to make really difficult decisions to reach that lower bottom line? Suggestions like that will come back up from me, not as recommendations and not as good ideas, but as difficult decisions to make should we feel that 4.75 is too high to bring forward to the Board of Finance or to the voters.
Okay, but you've, you know, you've answered my question because, you know, we have, class sizes here that if you take sections from three, I'm mostly saying this for the, you know, hopefully it's not like. To two, we're then butting up against the board recommended, recommended policies. And as you're suggesting, all we would need truly is one or two kids in that grade in that elementary school, for instance, to then need to bring that position back in. I was just not seeing any obvious place where that doesn't happen, actually.
That's exactly right. Which is why we added it after the fact this year.
Right, well, and then, and then found ourselves glad that we did because otherwise we would have been above Board of Ed policy recommendations for that grade in that school.
Exactly right.
Others, other thoughts?
This is a simple question, probably the simple answer. It's about on the buses and how the BOAG and technical schools have changed their start times. Do we know why that happened or where that decision came down from?
And it's impacting our buses, right?
And how it's impacting districts everywhere in terms of a financial burden for transportation? Do we have an understanding, like, no?
No, I can't answer that.
It just seems really strange that a public school entity would change their start times and not coordinate it with, I'm just curious whether, so we don't know where that decision came from? Because it's a significant amount of money, you know?
We're required to make those schools available to our students. We're happy to make those available. That system runs 18 high schools spread across the state of Connecticut and so it, no, I could certainly find out. We just knew that it changed and we needed to meet the new, the new requirements.
Seems like a huge change and to not really like think of the impact, the financial impact to districts and that, okay. So, but there's nothing we can do about it. And so, and do we share that cost with any other districts in terms of busing kids? No, it's our, just our kids, okay.
Just our, just our.
Okay.
Please know that we do partner with buses wherever we can. ECA is a good example of where we partner and share rides. There are at times going to be special education out placements where we might partner with other, with other neighboring communities. If we've got a student who's in a faraway school and Branford or Madison does also, we will share. But, but those are all individual, right? We need to, we need to balance drive time versus size of vehicle and so we do wherever we can. Learn has been working really diligently at trying to structure that in a way that opens up more possibilities. We look all the time, we take advantage of it whenever we can. We don't necessarily get to for a lot of pressures. ECA, I think, is the best example of where we partner and benefit from, from, I think we, I think we partner with Branford and East Haven.
We've got Clinton, Branford, Killingworth. There's like five, four or five districts that we share the ECA bus with.
This is interesting because then these kids, if they're going to these technical schools, then probably can't participate in after-school sports if their start times are different, correct? Because.
Makes it more challenging, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just don't know where that came from. So, yeah, if you could find out or off to your home, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
So I have a question on the sports and the coaches and the extra costs. You went through a survey of the students for the Japanese class?
Mm-hmm.
Have you also done the same for the sports to see what the feedback is on that?
No, no. So the way that the coaching position specifically or?
All of it. There's a lot that we're, that you're not suggesting that we fund? I'm just curious as to, how did you make decision one versus the other versus all of it? Half of it, whatever the decision is?
Every year, Mr. Jarvis makes a, prepares a budget proposal and a budget presentation in exactly the same way that all seven principals do. And, you know, we're always looking at the overall budget request that Jake brings in. This year, he brought forward four assistant coaching positions, some of which impacted really small numbers of students, one of which has historically been funded by a booster club and others of which would impact both the boys' and the girls' program in a sport. And so every year, it is, it's this balancing act and, and we rely very heavily on Mr. Jarvis and his assessment of where placing that is going to have the biggest impact. At the same time, we listen to parent and student groups who come out often year over year over year. You will sometimes see us hold off when a group makes a one-time appearance, but when the same group comes out two, three, four years in a row and talking about a 30-year history, then that begins to carry more weight as Jake makes his presentation and as, quite honestly, the business office and I listen to those. It was a really good question this year. What were all of the suggestions that Mr. Jarvis and the community made around athletics? And if you bundled them all together, it was an increase of $84,000. If you looked at the ones where we chose to fund some and not others or fund some partially and say, we're going to try to take a two-year bite approach, what that leaves unfunded is $57,000. In my mind, really quickly, that's kind of a number that brings up a teacher salary. And so how do we keep incrementally moving in a good direction, taking a big bite out of a facility question that has been coming up repeatedly for one group for 30 years, for another group for the last five or six years, but not always saying that we're gonna, no principal gets everything that they ask for. No, no constituent group who lobbies gets everything that they ask for, but it's balancing all of those different needs. You know, the first draft had all of the ice and pool time in this year's budget. The first draft had all of the positions Jake had asked for. The first draft didn't have cheerleading because those concerns were raised during the public hearings that you all had last week. But the first draft is usually much, much higher. We, we worked really hard to get this budget below 5%. So it just becomes that forced choice in, in making the priorities. You know, we could certainly add it in. I think on my, my suggested list of additions, I had the balance of the pool and ice time. We could certainly talk about pushing some or all of those items back into the budget for this year.
Yeah, I've received a lot of feedback and I don't know why folks are focusing on the Japanese versus sports. But the feedback has been, we don't know anyone who wants a Japanese class. We know a lot of people who would like to see additional funding for sports. And I think it's, I think there's a lot of lack of information, like how do we come up with the Japanese class, et cetera? But that's been the most consistent feedback that I've got, that I've received across the board.
Yeah, and that's interesting to me, but also it's really important to respond to the, that formula. And I know it's easy in a budget. We want to be careful about looking at one-to-one correlations. So don't offer the Japanese course and then push that salary, that teacher's salary into the sports. It'll get us everything we want. Remember that students do have a requirement for world language. There is a graduation requirement for world language courses at the high school with two or three years.
Two.
So every student who enrolls in our high school has to take two years of a world language in order to graduate. We've got to make sure that we keep staffing to a level that we can seat all of those students. So that's where that, that lack of ability to hire the French teacher becomes critical. If we don't staff the appropriate number of positions and offer the appropriate number of, I mean, I think there are a lot of kids who'd say, I'll give up my world language completely. You don't, and, and put, so, so again, it's not, and I know, and I even just said it. I said, we make forced choices and we set priorities, but there aren't one-to-one correlations. So I'm glad, I'm really glad you raised that question.
For that point, yes.
Right, cutting the Japanese position wouldn't allow us just to quickly fund all of that teacher salary equivalent in athletics. We'd still have to find a world language position, whether it was Japanese or French or something, in order to offer seats for all 1,000 students to get two years. And that's the minimum requirement. Many of our students in Guilford take more than two years. In fact, they want to take four years. They want to take an AP language because that leverages better college applications. So we have to be really careful about saying kids don't want Japanese, just buy this instead.
And my, my memory of this is a tiny bit old, but colleges are requiring at least three languages. So it really, the year is, the expectation is high.
But if you're looking at an Ivy or a more competitive school, you might have a greater requirement than two years. Exactly right. And even if it's not a requirement, you want to get that fourth year AP in if you're looking at the really competitive schools.
It's kind of Japanese.
Or want to do, you know, international, right? You, I would love to see more students actually graduating bilingual. And so again, it's, it's apples and oranges.
And if Japanese was eliminated, if we did not move forward with that, we would have to retain the point four French, is that what you're saying?
At a minimum, we'd have to retain that point four position. So you wouldn't take a full teacher salary. You might be able to pull the, and, and part of what the high school is working to is to create more flexibility. We run into this all the time. Scheduling isn't an absolute science. So we can't just say, we've got 1,003 kids this year. They all need this many credits. Exactly how many FTEs do you need? Because you've got to be able to schedule it properly. So you will sometimes find some classes that are running at slightly lower levels or students who have free periods because you need the flexibility to make all the pieces and parts fit for every kid.
So just.
And when you had a high school, if you had high school kids, you've all experienced that.
And the more singleton classes you have, the harder it is to fill them across the board because they're, it's the way the schedules work at a high school. It would be, it presents challenges.
If your AP Japanese only meets six period and that's also when AP, AP music meets, then one kid can't be in both of those classes.
Do you have like a sense of what the class sizes currently are at? When the world language classes, is there a risk of overcrowding classes if we didn't backfill this?
Well, that's the flip side, right? If you have fewer people, then the only way to get all those seats is to increase that class size. So you both reduce flexibility and you end up overcrowding those classes. I could give you elementary class sizes off the top of my head. High school, I will again have to get back to you.
I have one more question on that.
Oh, no, please, absolutely, go right ahead.
I know that someone asked the question today, which is a good question. What is the overall percentage of the athletics as a part of our entire budget?
It's right here.
One point.
1.26.
1.26% of our entire budget is devoted to athletics?
Yeah.
Outside of our built-in facilities like the gym and.
Right, and so I tried to put a great big asterisk.
Big asterisk.
Yep, there's an overhead cost that's impossible to tease out.
But an operational cost.
Operational, year by year, one and a quarter. One and a quarter percent annually goes to.
Based on the proposed budget, 1.26. So at the.
Is that this year's budget or the proposal?
Proposed budget.
Right.
What is in the proposed budget?
So if we added in the other amount of, what was it? $57,000?
And, and just again, I'm going to pause, I'm just going to set the stage for anyone who might be watching. So the draft budget, in response to the budget from the athletic director, in response to requests that come in over the years, et cetera, includes an increase, increased funding for ice time for girls' and boys' hockey, includes increased funding for pool time and includes one additional assistant coach for tennis.
Correct.
And what's happened among the board, as we heard in two public forums, much of the discussion, in short, public forums, but much of the discussion focused on athletics, we've asked these kinds of questions, right? We've asked what the additional assistant coaches were for. We've asked what would it cost to increase funding to the hockey for, for ice beyond what is in the budget, et cetera? So this $57,000 number, I'm staring at Moira's, has it up in front of her? Has, is, is what we're discussing. That's, that's the topic here.
And to be clear, the $57,000 is just an aggregate number. It's not an all or nothing number.
That's right.
That is an à la carte figure. This board could choose to add some, all or none of those items that total $57,000, some of which are $35,000 if you take them as a lump and some of which are as small as about $3,505.
And again, on the topic of athletics, I know we, every year, we are approving donations essentially from booster clubs that are funding often assistant coaches as well as equipment.
And facility time.
And facility time, okay.
Historically, in some sports, correct?
And it looked like one of the positions in this list, assistant positions, had been funded by a booster?
At least one has traditionally been funded by a booster club. Jake brings it up every year. It is in one of the programs that has a significant number of coaches. They would certainly benefit by having another one. But we also know that that group has been funding it independent of the school system.
Right, okay.
Yep, and we, we have taken advantage of that generosity in the past and, yes.
Well, in a prioritization, I can imagine in a prioritization of needs, et cetera, that comes into play.
Exactly right.
I want to go back to the reductions in your, in your budget presentation because you talked about medical, pension, and, actually, you haven't, tuition.
Sorry.
Can you explain kind of the thought process behind those reductions? Because logically, you know, when we're talking about maybe adding into this budget, we might be looking to, you know, areas of reduction, so.
We had hoped to possibly be able to give you good news on medical. Remember, we put our budget together early in the process and sometimes as we get more months of experience behind us, we're able to come to you mid-process and say, actually, we've.
Yeah, we like when that happens.
We don't have that figure for you today. We're still hopeful to get an update and maybe by Monday evening, we will have more information for you on that, on that medical figure. But tonight, we can't suggest a reduction there. I did call out retirement savings. Oftentimes, the base budget has a built-in reduction to the salary line, sort of an offsetting reduction. It goes up, it usually goes up annually as you see salaries increase, contract negotiations and new, new positions being added. But we also annually usually see turnover and as some teachers retire at the top of the salary scale, we, we likely replace them with, with less experienced teachers who come in at a lower step on the salary scale. This budget doesn't have such a savings baked in. It's a place that the board could talk. There might be a reasonable number to build in, but we are cautious and want to be conservative about that number this year, particularly because of the teacher shortage that we are experiencing. We are seeing districts getting into bidding wars over positions. If we were to lose science teachers, special education teachers or world language teachers particularly to retirement,
They'd pay more.
It's unlikely that we will be able, we might in fact pay the same or even a higher rate in some cases to fill a position and rather than leave it.
And I think we saw that in this year's budget.
We have.
Yeah, that's right.
And so there's a possibility of maybe making, and usually at this time, I'm giving you a number and I'm saying we can reasonably increase the retirement. In fact, we, we attempted to incentivize teachers to inform us of their retirements early so we'd have a better data set with which to make that. And right now, most of those incentivized retirements that we are aware of fall into exactly those shortage areas that I just named. So we, if we are to take a number there, I would want to be conservative and not take more than maybe $35,000 or $70,000 in that area, which would represent two retirements where maybe we would be able to hire at a significantly lower level. And that, other years, we've done over 100,000. We've done maybe 120, 140 in that line. We'd want to be conservative there. Tuition, when we talk about out-of-district tuition, particularly special education tuition, we always want to build in a contingency because you can never know students who may have emerging needs next year or students who might be new to district with needs and we have to be able to meet those needs. But when you're working on a budget number, there's always the possibility of reducing that contingency to try to get the budget to where it needs to be. That might work on paper this year, but then next year, and when you think of that graph that we show you, the last three or four years, we've consistently been coming in under budget on special education because we've worked to build that contingency. But historically, we would come in significantly below budget and that will require compromises and other budget lines to be able to meet that special ed need. It's not discretionary, we must meet those needs, we will meet those needs. And so when we, if we cut the tuition line too low now and then have that need next year, we will be making mid-year adjustments and compromises in other areas in order to meet that expenditure.
Well, and, and. Well, and, and I believe, I had it right in front of me a second ago, that in the increase, the tuition is noted to be, I want to say it was seventy-eight thousand, eighty-seven thousand. We have been reviewing, right, year warrants monthly to know that in some cases, that could be just one additional student.
Exactly right.
Or even not one, meaning one additional student could cost more, so.
One, one significant outplacement could cost more than that entire increase, correct?
I had it still in this area, John, unless I'm interrupting your train of thought. Under additions, there's, pension is listed, not, is, is that because we have, I remember a conversation where we had a, an amount we were told and then it got changed.
Right, so because we start our budget so early, I had asked for an amount from the actuaries. They gave me an estimate. When we got the final number, it was higher than what they had originally given me, which is why we asked for the additional forty-
Forty thousand, I believe.
Forty thousand.
But it's in, but, but my point is, it's, it's, it's in, oh, it's not.
It is not. So the budget that, the budget that we presented to you two or three weeks ago is essentially forty thousand dollars like, we need to add forty thousand dollars to pension. If, if, if your deliberations tonight and next week ended up coming to a complete wash, then I would be suggesting that we record a forty thousand dollar retirement savings and add forty thousand dollars to pension and move forward with that as the final budget. I don't expect that nothing else is going to happen.
No, I understand that.
But I would suggest that as we get to next Monday, we need to start with a forty thousand dollar increase at a minimum. The pension committee is now recommending that we need to put in forty thousand more than the number we initially built this budget on back in December.
Okay.
I think the only other question I have is related to site improvements. There's, there's a half a million dollars in there for site improvements. You, you made a reduction of ten percent. Uh, sorry, no, you made a reduction of fifty thousand dollars. I, I think, you know, I look at that, you know, we're always looking at, at areas and I just wonder if there's, there's, there's more to reduce there.
There's always more to reduce there. And again, it's going to be a little bit like, like the tuition line. Years ago, we had conversations among this board and with the Board of Finance and suggested that a, a reasonable place to be would be one percent of the budget sitting in the site improvements annually. That would suggest that line should be six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that if every year, we had that amount of discretionary preventative maintenance, we would be able to keep up with the regular wear and tear and water spills and plumbing leakages and things that happen. That being said, when you are up against cutting the pre-K or the kindergarten or the second grade teaching position, I would suggest that we look harder at site improvements. Now, that is just kicking a can down the road. It's not responsible if you do it year over year over year. Realistically, at a facility level, we are in good shape because we have cared for the, the buildings and the facilities and the infrastructure well. But if we start making decisions like that regularly, then we will get behind the eight ball and we will start losing good money if we do it. So again, that is put there, not because I'm excited about it, not because it's a good idea, but when push comes to shove, and if we're talking about increasing a second to third grade class and getting right up against the numbers, then at some point, I'm going to say to you, we need to be looking at site improvements and at least balancing those two, right? And ultimately, we're going to try to say, take a little here and a little less from those important positions. In my initial draft, the one that I carry around in my head before I start to see real numbers, site improvements was, was booked to be a significant increase this year, to start getting back to that one percent after last year and this year. It's not the year to make that investment, but I hope it's also not the year to make a further reduction.
Deferred maintenance costs a lot more money than proactive maintenance.
Yeah, we've learned that over the years.
I was just going to say, unfortunately.
Yep.
Paul, with tuition, the, the really successful program that we have on Church Street, I'm sure that those students were factored in to that number that we currently have. And is there possibility of more students, like have all parents or families been kind of queried about where they might see, you know, if their student is kind of coming into that age where that program might be beneficial? So we've factored that in?
Yeah, so the first, the first thing we do with tuition is take all of the students that we have this year and plan for their needs next year. And so with that move forward, seventy-three Church Street was part of that calculation this year. And it, it's a really exciting opportunity. And it builds on similar work that we've done with the partnership that we have with, with Clinton and Madison, with the alternative high school here, with the bridges at the elementary. We've been, right, we've, we've done a lot of work over the last 10 years to build more of those in district. And they ultimately do save money, yes. That tuition increase this year would be bigger were it not for the Church Street program, the Transition Academy that we now have access to because we built it locally.
So are students from other districts participating in it yet?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So would there be a financial benefit once those students start participating?
There could be, yes.
Would that happen next year? Is it possible? Like, I'm just curious.
I, I don't know. I'd need to check with Mr. Scanziano. But in all of these, the alternative high school, the, the program at Church Street, it does give us the opportunity when a neighboring local district has a student with a need. If they don't have the, then we can become the out-of-district placement rather than being the district sending to such, those placements. We never do that at the expense of our local students and the service and the quality of the service they receive. But if we can do it without reducing the quality that our local students receive, then yes, we might be able to offset some costs with some limited revenue in those areas. We're not doing it currently at Church Street. I don't know if there were plans to do it next year.
I don't believe it was planned for next year. I think because the program was so new and they were still building it out, they are adding, two or three students will be joining the program for next year that are our students. Again, avoiding some outplacement costs. So I don't think they were ready to do that yet, but we never know.
Right, okay.
You know, if the right, if the right thing came up at the right time, you know, it could be a possibility.
A lot of that is going to happen in the moment when two special ed directors from neighboring districts talk to each other.
Yeah.
Can I go back to sports quickly again?
Absolutely.
Can you ask A.D. Jarvis to put together, if we were going to spend more money, suggest spending more money, can you ask him to put a prioritization together for us? And I suggest that he prioritize those teams that have shown the most interest in additional financing, or funding, I should say, so we can get that quickly.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see some justifications behind his prioritization.
Sure, I know that his quick response is going to be, that's the proposal that I made to you guys in that closed room. But yes, I'll, I'll, we'll pull that out, flesh that out and ask him to add some rationale to it.
Appreciate it, helpful.
Again, staying on athletics, and we heard at the public comment or the public forum, some interest in cheerleading. That, that did not come up in our public forum in October. So it was, it was not on our radar at that time. And I know we have had, and we talked about it in the public forum last week, but I know you were unable to join us. We have had a threshold of, of an interest of ten, at least 10 students, right? And, and part of that, I mean, it makes sense, right? That, that there's, there's a, an interest in making sure we're putting investment that, that benefits as many students as possible. So this is a group that's come to us, they've noted interest in, or, I'm sorry, numbers in a feeder, in the, in essentially feeder program for, right? That, that there are girls involved in a number of grades up onto the high school and expressed that they think there is interest in the high school. But do we have a, a sense of that right now? I don't, I don't know that we have a sense of that right now, or? How, how, how does Jake go about thinking about that? I, I know, for instance, when swimming came to us a couple of years ago, I, I think we had a sense of like numbers at the high school that, and, and in fact-
Correct, it was high school.
I'll get this wrong, I'll get, I, I think the girls team had enough and the boys didn't or something. So one remained with the co-op because they couldn't get to 10 and another didn't.
The swim team, yeah.
Thank you, you know better.
The boys are still a co-op. The boys, the boys team here in Guilford continues to co-op with other districts. But yes, I think the difference in those presentations was that we had a list of high school age students who were already swimming competitively, who said that I will next year swim for the high school girls team, if there were a high school girls team, rather than necessarily saying that there's a feeder program. And the experience with cheerleading specifically was that we did have a cheerleading program, I think as recently as 2016 or 17.
Okay.
We did not enroll 10 students in that program. And so we made the difficult choice to stop offering it at a time that it was in the budget. And, and in fact, the stipend for that position only completely came out of the budget in the 2021 budget season after, for three or four years, we still didn't have enough interest of high school. And, and part of what happens is that the high school offerings expand dramatically. So there are opportunities that we offer at the high school in, in both boys and girls sports that don't exist in the community or at the, at the middle school level in eighth grade. And so one of the challenges to having relatively small high school population with the wide variety of athletic programs that we offer is that they compete against each other. So to be really clear, even if this board chose to put money in the budget for coaching positions for cheerleading next year, that straw poll that was shared or the interest that is projected, we wouldn't actually staff that position unless we concretely enrolled at least 10 students who were interested. So again, that stipend existed in the budget for three or four years without being able. To be fair, we weren't out recruiting.
Right, right, right.
We weren't out beating the bushes, trying to-
But that's not our role.
No, exactly right. That's not, that's not, Jake doesn't do that. Jake doesn't decide that we're going to offer a program and then go out and, and try to create interest and fill it. But we carried the stipend for a few years in case, so it only came out of the budget in 21, 22. Here we are building the 23, 24 budget and there's some consideration of putting it back in. If we choose to do that, if this board chooses to do that, administratively, we would still hold that threshold of 10 that this board identified, again, I think it was 16 or 17. And if we enrolled 11 or 12 students, we would run that program again and then the year after. If we didn't, those monies would again sit in the budget unexpended for a, a year or two. And in fact, that was one of the questions that was asked. Every year, there are budget lines that go either unexpended or, or partially expended. Every year, there are budget lines that are over expended. So remember, in this budget year, we're carrying four teaching positions that we didn't budget for. So if this year, we were carrying a coaching stipend like cheerleading that didn't get spent, it would get bundled up in the business office and used to offset unfunded expenses like a pre-K teacher. And so sometimes, lots of small dollar amounts, and, and at the end of every budget year, you know that you approve those transfers.
Right.
So again, a big budget like this one doesn't have clear one-to-one correspondence. And at times, we've heard a female team say, you didn't expend the money for the boys team because you're a co-op, can't we just have those dollars? That's not the way it works. Any unspent $10 bill is going to get bundled up at the end and we're going to use it to cover a $60,000 teaching position that we didn't budget for this year or a $600,000 shortfall in tuition, which is not a, we've had that shortfall in years past. And so there is fluidity within the budget when something doesn't get expended or completely expended.
I, I wouldn't say I'm a proponent to carry a line item that hasn't been proven to be valid. So if there are cheerleaders, if there are 10, a minimum of 10 cheerleaders, they need to prove it to us before we, in my opinion, in my opinion. They would have to prove it to us before we carry that line item. Otherwise, you know, we have a crew team that has dozens of members, very active members, and we don't, we don't give them much money at all. So there's, there's other sports that are out there, active. And we, we did a sailing program, you guys, last year. They had nine members and we did not fund them, so. And I'm saying this more to the public than anyone else.
Yeah.
The 10 is a rule that we've, we've stuck to. And I don't think we should fund anything until we know we have 10.
And, but to be fair, sometimes it's impossible to know prospectively because we could go to all the eighth to 11th graders this year, ask them, if we had a cheerleading team, would you cheer? And if they sign, we can't hold them to that. And then, and then when next September rolls around and if only nine of them sign up, we can't go to the other four and say, we budgeted this because of your, and, and that often happens. We've seen that happen with other interest surveys before.
I would point to the other teams that have actively requested funds to step up and actively request the funds and show us that you have 10, 10 members. That would-
And is it the kind of opportunity where I know with other sports where they, they fundraise and kind of create a booster to support themselves?
Can they start that way?
Exactly.
That's how they grow. And they, they kind of self-fund and grow and do booster activities. And then when they've kind of proven that they've gotten the track record, then we start to- That's been my experience with-
Oftentimes, interest is expressed by being a volunteer club for two or three or four years, right? And many lacrosse teams around the state were built out that way. They were a club that had a volunteer coach. Now you can say, there are 20 of us that have been doing this for the last three years and our coach has been doing it as a volunteer. Yes, many of our programs do get into the budget that way.
I feel like swimming grew that way.
It did.
It really did. I remember that the first board budget season I had and there were parents that kept coming to our meetings and saying, we want to build this. And, and I remember you saying, yes, build it, please, you know, and then we can-
Many programs, many, and, and that's how you create the interest and the proof without doing it through a straw poll or an interest survey. Now, and again, to make the comparison, for world language, we get to say to all of those high school students, you have to sign up for one. We're not asking you if you want to take world, it's a graduation requirement.
But is there any concern about the survey results? Because I have an eighth grader that took a survey and her parents had opinions too.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, and I, I did just want to mention, Dr. Hurst, Dick Hurst could not be with us tonight. This was a special meeting that I tried to schedule with as many of us that could be possible. And there was not one night when all nine of us could be here. He did share a communication with me, interested in us thinking about the athletics as we're doing. And as a, as a district that is committed to many things, educational excellence, excellence and students' mental health and wellness. He certainly advocated in this communication to me that, that athletics is one of many places that really supports that for students. So I did, in his absence tonight, wanted to share that because he did communicate.
Yeah, I'm just reading his letter and, you know, he really affiliates the, you know, our work around the porch of a graduate, you know, and our prioritization of the social and emotional well-being of our students, that athletics very much takes a, a very key part in that development of our students.
So I, I just wanted to make sure that his voice got represented since this got scheduled on a night when he couldn't be here.
And I'd like to echo what he says, really. I mean, I understand I'm relatively new and I understand the gradual process you just laid out for how most, you know, teams grow over time. But, you know, in light of the current state of a lot of our children, within our district even, I mean, this, you know, I look at what we've added with, yes, our funds and a full salary. And then I look at these little increments. I know they do add up and I know this is an impossible budget this year, but I look at the impact some of these things could have for such a small amount. And it just, I do.
No, I think it's a lot for us to consider, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I think it's really critically important to, so, just to their mental, especially after COVID, they need to, they need to be out there, they need teamwork, they need to work with other people. They need to be athletic, they need to be active all the time. I think it's very important.
And I think we have an obligation with some of the asks for assistant coaches, like for kids' safety.
Yeah.
I feel as a board somewhat obligated to provide appropriate assistant coaches so that there's not one coach with too many athletes and kids kind of able to get themselves in some sort of physical situation that they shouldn't be in. Like, I really like having extra eyes on the kids. I do feel obligated to cover that.
Well, lots, lots to think about, for sure. Want to give space for any other topics tonight?
I just want to ask, kind of back to the elevator question.
Goes up and down.
I know that that doesn't come out of, like, if we wind up saying, we're not going to do the elevator, it's half a million bucks. I know it's bonding and I know that doesn't move our percentage point at all. But how can, like, I kind of want to explain- can, like, I kind of want to explain more to the community, like, what does that actually do for people's pocketbooks? Like, how does that half a million dollars, if we wind up having to keep the budget at four and three quarters, and we can reduce the bonding by half a million bucks, like, what does that look like to taxpayers?
We will have a better picture of that once the three big budgets get put together. And so there are three budgets that get developed a little bit separately, and then they become the overall town budget that gets voted on in April. One, and the biggest portion, is our annual operating budget. And so that is the 4.7% increase, the $68 million. It's a really good point for those watching, the elevator is not in our operational budget. The elevator is actually part of a relatively small bonding request that we're making this year. Again, that responsibility of keeping our facilities well-maintained so that we are spending money thoughtfully and responsibly early, rather than waiting and having to spend more to fix things down the road. This year, there's a relatively small request that includes a few relatively small projects, the elevator, some furniture purchases, and I think most importantly, the one that I would prioritize the highest of the three, a gym floor replacement at Baldwin Middle School. So there's the board budget, there will be the town budget that is smaller than the Board of Education budget, but includes a lot of important things like public works, police, and fire, all of the other salaries for municipal employees in the town budget, and then that bonding request. In a year, in a year like when we passed the high school, this building project, that bonding was significant. This year, it will depend on what other bonding projects the town is making. My understanding is that there are a few, if any. And so this bonding package could be a relatively small portion, whether it's two or three or one project, that gets lumped in with the two operating budgets. All of those together will then have an impact on taxpayers and what your tax bill will look like, which this year is going to be more complicated by how the revaluation impacts that overall budget. The town business manager usually puts together an illustration of what that all looks like. I don't think I know enough to be able to say, if we did all three projects or just two, this is what it would look like. But remember, all three projects are about 1.5 million. That's being balanced against our $68 million operating budget, the town's operating budget, which is smaller than that, but a lot bigger than 1.5, and then how that bonding gets baked in. I'm not completely sure that the town has a small or zero bond request this year, but I think they have a small or zero bond request this year.
I don't think it's zero. I know they have something, because this is their year to do one.
Oh, all right.
They're on in every, I think they've tried to do one every other year.
So I think they do have one. I don't know what the size is of it yet.
But especially in this year with the revaluation, that will be put together when the full budget gets presented to the town, and I'm sure that there will be some explanation about if your home is worth 200,000 or 400,000, this is what this budget impact looks like to you.
Yeah, the Board of Finance does a good job.
Right, exactly.
And the mil rate hasn't been set. There's a lot of factors.
You can't do that, and so, it's offset by the whole grand list.
The grand list.
That's the fourth component.
Gets set.
Yeah, it's not, we need the grand list to be finalized in order to do all the calculations, and then the budgets will set.
That's right.
The grand list.
The bottom line is it's money that we wouldn't have to borrow. And so, right, so for all of that obfuscation that I just threw at it, the bottom line is, it would be half a million dollars that we wouldn't have to borrow and bond if we chose not to do the elevator for all of the, all of the things that we spoke about a little earlier.
So it's not just the 500,000, it's the 500,000 plus the interest. So it's just one more thing we have to pay. It's like any other debt, we owe it, and the less we owe, the better off we are credit-wise.
With the debt service that we already had bonded from previous years that we are still paying down, so it's not just this bonding package, it's all the other ones that are out there, including this high school.
Are we starting to?
Yes, we are on the back end of that.
This is the first year, right?
This should be the second.
Second or third.
It's a first year of a.
Since we hit the crest?
Yeah, I think we're starting, I think this current year is our crest, the '23, '24 is the start of the decline. A very small decline, but it is starting, we are starting on the downhill side of the high school.
Right.
It's a really good question.
That was a really confusing answer.
I know. I said, I actually used the word obfuscation.
Sometimes you throw around terms like grand list, mil rate, you know, revaluation, and to some people, maybe that's a language, but to folks out there, it may not be.
Yeah, no, but the, the, the grand, you know, one of the things that happened, for instance, last year, is that both the town and we, the Board of Education, put forth a budget at a higher percentage than had happened in previous years. And in the Board of Finance's consideration, one of the things that was identified was that the grand list was quite high last year, and so was able to counter these increases largely driven by the medical line, both on the town and the Board of Ed side. So there are, it's an equation that involves lots of parts.
And we could have a really good grand list report this year.
That's right. That's right.
Being at 4.78 might not be as significant as we once, we won't know that yet. And we probably won't know that before next Monday.
No.
No, 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 no. The Board of, yeah, by the Board of, by the time where the Board of Finance is discussing these budgets, they will know, but we won't, we will not know before then.
And for what it's worth, I embrace that, right? We should be building the budget based on our needs. And it is responsible, and it's thoughtful, and it is never spend thrilled. But I'm glad that we don't, that we don't have all of those figures and aren't trying to do it based on a bottom line. We're building a budget based on the needs of our students, and we advocate for that. And then, if it doesn't pass the Board of Finance, or if they make an adjustment, or if it doesn't pass at the ballot box, then we will respond to that. But our first draft, I appreciate that we get to do it focused on the needs of the students. And not every community does. There are different processes and procedures. I appreciate the way that we get to do it focusing on our kids.
Can I ask one more? This might be a lender question. On tuition, I'm just looking, the budget reflects the anticipated excess cost grant. Now, there's potential legislation that's going to reevaluate that whole system. Have we anticipated that in how we've budgeted for this, or are we still basing it on historical data?
I took that into consideration and then went a little bit below it just in case to be a little bit more conservative on it. But knowing that that's where we could end up if that tier stays, I went just a little under that figuring we're going to get a little bit less.
Yeah, great, thank you.
All right. Are there any last questions, discussion topics for tonight?
Dr. Bellis Tracy, may I just add two contextual points again?
Oh, of course.
So this is the second biggest budget that I've ever presented to this community, last year being the highest. I just want to remind the community specifically, I know the board is aware of these contexts, but our budget request this year, while it might be unusual historically for us in Guilford, it is not unusual in the state this year. There are other towns and municipalities that are facing school board proposed increases of six, close to 7%, 5%. Our budget is not out of alignment with the increasing cost of providing education, even though it's historically unusual here in Guilford across the last decade or more. I think that is really important. And then I also want to remind the community, and I would point to on our website in the budget presentation, slide number 20. The other piece that I think is really important is to look at our comparable performance on a measure compared to our expenditures per students. The State of Connecticut puts together a district performance index. It is the largest, most comprehensive, most holistic look at how schools in Connecticut do. And when you look at Guilford Public Schools by that one measure, it's only one measure, but it is a holistic look. It includes, it includes performance on standardized tests, it includes attendance, it includes graduation rates, it includes students who go to two- and four-year colleges, it includes access to college preparatory as well as vocational and arts classes. When you look at that measure, there are only four K through 12 districts in the state that outperform Guilford Public Schools. When you look at our per-student spending, there are about 70 districts who outspend Guilford Public Schools. We are a good return on investment, and even though that investment may be a bigger increase this year than it has been in past years, it's still a good investment. It is a smart bet. And so as we finalize a budget, which we will bring to the community for their support, I just want to remind everybody that we're not running, we're not already the most expensive school district in the state. We're not even among the top, most expensive school districts in the state, but our performance, our output is, we're in the top five. And I think that's important because it gets, like with deferred maintenance, it gets easy to say, we're doing fine, we don't have to put the money in this year because we're already doing great. When you start making those decisions and don't keep maintaining that baseline, then it's going to be hard to maintain that performance at that level of investment. So I just wanted to remind the community of that. I know this board knows that well, knows it better than anybody else, but I wanted to remind the community as we go into Monday and then into the future conversations at the town level about how well we do.
Given the rate of inflation, I think it's commendable that we've kept it under 5%.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, to the community, we will, as I noted, the Board of Education will be holding an already scheduled special meeting next Monday, February 6th, at which time we will be discussing and then voting on, deciding on a final budget to put forth to the Board of Finance. There will not be a public forum during that meeting, but the public is always welcome to come and watch or watch online. And then, at that point, the budget will be submitted to the town. The town will make those budgets public, and it will then be the Board of Finance's job to start considering those budgets. Thank you for joining us tonight. I thank my colleagues for all the participation and questions as we dive into this budget. Thank you especially to Mrs. Trudeau for answering numerous questions as we went line by line. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good night.